Is the mic on?
Is it on now? Okay. The light fooled me. Our meeting is divided into two sessions, the public hearing session and the deliberation session. And the public hearing session, an application or group application on the agenda is called. The applicant makes his or her presentation. Commission members ask questions, if any. Members of the public are commitments. Comments. Only four people may speak for an agenda item and four against. Each speaker is limited to five minutes, subject to questions by the commission. At four minutes, a loud beep will indicate one minute left to speak, and at this point, please summarize your comments. After all opposition speakers have finished, the applicant will be given time to respond. If you do intend to speak, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, and give your name and address for our minutes. Please direct all comments to the commission only and not to the applicant or to the audience. Please remember to speak directly into the microphone. On routine applications, the applicant may simply raise his or her hand if there are no objections to the staff recommendations. I will then announce the applicant is in full agreement with those recommendations. If there are any questions, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. After hearing all applications, the commission will go into the deliberation session. In the deliberation session, the commissioners discuss each application with input from the staff as necessary, but with no input from the audience. Commissioners then vote on each application, and results of the voting can be learned from the planning department. If some issues arise in the deliberation session that were not addressed in the public hearing, the chairman has a discretion either to allow additional comments pertaining to those issues in order to resolve them, or call for the application to be held over for discussion at a future meeting. Occasionally, one or more commission members may recuse themselves from discussing and voting on a given application. A recusal does not necessarily mean the member is directly involved with the application or the applicant. Depending upon the circumstances, ethical rules may require a recusal when there is only the slightest appearance of a conflict of interest. If a regular member recuses, a supernumerary will vote in their stead unless both supernumeraries are already voting due to absences. The planning commission makes final decisions, subject to appeal, on subdivisions, planning approvals, and planned unit developments. The planning commission only makes recommendations on zoning applications with the city council making the final decisions. Please turn off all cell phones at this time. Commissioners and staff, please remember to turn on your microphones when speaking. And now I'll turn it over to Ms. Latham to call the roll. I'm gonna call the roll. I'm Jennifer Dickinson. Carlos Gant is not present. Latham. John Valas.
Here.
Alan Cameron is not here. Taylor Atchison.
Here.
Matt Anderson.
Here.
Nick Amberger.
Here.
Beth Rich.
Here.
Don Hembry.
Here.
I'm sorry. I apologize. We're gonna call number one, 5335-5330, Shillinger's Road South. Is the applicant present in agreement with all of the recommendations? He has indicated agreement. Is there anyone here in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to it? Thank you very much. Number two, 6105 Airport Boulevard. Wesley Station Subdivision. Is the applicant present and in agreement? And he has indicated agreement with the recommendations. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Thank you. Number three, 1451 and 1459 Government Street and 1458 Church Street, Stokely Corner Subdivision. Is applicant is present and has indicated he is in agreement with the recommendations. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this application?
Ms. Latham, is your mic on?
Can y'all hear me now?
Yes.
Is that better? I'm sorry. All right. There was no opposition to number three. Move on to number four.
Can we also note that Cart Blackwell is here?
Yes, sir. Number four, 5773 Summit Avenue, Paper Place Subdivision. Is the applicant present and in agreement with recommendations? He has indicated his agreement. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Thank you. Number five, 5188 and 5208 Mobile South Street, Royal Lagoon Seafood. Applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Thank you. Number six, 5205, 5225, and 5245 Business Square, Mobile Business South Park Subdivision. The applicant present and in agreement with the recommendations? He has indicated his agreement. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Okay. Thank you very much. Number seven, Northeast Corner of Cody Road, Salsal, Summerby Drive, the Arbor's at Summerby Park Subdivision. Applicant present?
Graham, 6576 Airport Boulevard. This one is the commercial lot, right? I think there's a little bit of confusion. Please give me some guidance how we should do this. If that lot, now, a lot of legal record, all we're trying to do is rezone that lot. Is that correct? So, to clarify, subdivision plat, do we just need to do that?
It's not a legal lot of record. You can proceed with the rezoning without it being a legal lot based on your meets and bounds, legal description, but prior to any permitting, the plat will need to be recorded.
Okay. Should we do this, do that with this, the next application? Make it part of the Arbor's subdivision?
It's up to you. Could you do two lot subdivision or one lot subdivision?
I would.
I thought, I just, I thought that McCray Williams had done this as well as they did.
You do have a one lot subdivision to create this as a legal lot of record as well as your rezoning request for this piece of property. This is a remnant from a larger property that was subdivided when Summerby Drive was built and the other piece that you're bringing in. So, you have appropriate applications before the planning commission today to create a legal lot and to rezone it.
Okay. The only thing that was designed to accept the LB2, which is, I'm fine with. Well, the owner's fine with it.
So, you were good with LB2 as recommended by staff?
We are. We are. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Do we want to go into the other one?
I'm just, did we need findings of facts on the zone or we did not?
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak against this application? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Gail Fair. I live at 69227 Providence Estates Drive South, Mobile, Alabama, 366955. I'm the part, let me make sure I have it correct. I'm talking about the northeast corner of Cody Road South and Summerby Road. Is that correct? Okay. Thank you. Right now, we were told on our forms that we received that it is a rezoning from R1 to B3.
Yes, ma'am. That's what they requested.
Right. Okay. So, I was here to talk about, I'm sure most of you have been out there. This area is very residential, so it's very beautiful. We have very few spots in Mobile where you can walk Saturday, Sundays, or ride bikes in this area. We've also been told that the housing going in would be my generation, that grandchildren would be in that area. We could sell our homes in Providence and move back there. So, if this remain, if this goes into a B3, I just wanted to bring out the effects that we could have adult entertainment, we could have a liquor store, we could have a pawn shop.
Ms. Fair. The city has recommended to the developer that they zoned it LB2, which is a lower classification than B3, more restrictive.
Okay. You're saying B2.
LB2, which is limited B2.
Okay. Because when I looked up B2, it still allowed the liquor store, the pawn shops, a series of other ones. B3 was the worst, but what we have right now and the other section in front of us, the B, what I understand, I could be wrong, just B1 to me was what we were used to, the doctor's offices and that type of professional buildings. So, I'm not even sure that I would want B2 either from what.
It's LB2.
LB2.
And that's a lower level of B2.
More restrictive.
It doesn't allow the pawn shops, and it doesn't allow some of the more intensive uses of a B2. It's more neighborhood friendly.
All right. Well, what is the difference of that one and a B, just having a plain B1?
B1 would be office.
Okay. Which is, I'm gonna go on and just propose for that. When I think about, let's say I bought a piece of property in there from Mr. Graham and took one of these homes, and we're saying now what he wants, won't have the liquor store, whatever. I guess my point is, we don't know exactly now what could go there. So, since there's so much property up Cody Road already, before you get to the pond, which is our section, Providence Estates, and that kind of stops it. It stops the road there. There's the big pond, then we start Summerby, which is beautiful. It's a beautiful area. So, my point is now, why do we go and change this now? Why does it have to be now, since you've got all the land from our pond up to CVS, which is up to Airport, which they can build anything on that they want? And then when somebody comes in there and he sells it, then let's come say, hey, we want to put this there. And then we can look at it and say, you know, is that really what we want in that area? We have the wetlands across from us, we have two churches up the road, we have a Christian school up the road, we have beautiful trees everywhere. I just don't see the need to do it right now. When the time comes and it's gotta be sold, then you say, hey, we want to rezone this from R1 instead of opening up now, and then we have no say at that point because it's already rezoned. Now, it could be better like you're saying, but I mean, there's still things that could get in there that I haven't looked up now because they had put on here, I went and what was sent to the house, and it was to B3. So, I'm just posing, why even rezone right? I don't see a need to it. And then there's always this thing that came down the road, and once it's there, if we do go to this, you said L?
LB2.
LB2.
Right.
And I'm sorry, I just don't have a list. I'd have to look now because we weren't told what it was, you're saying. But if we go with B, just plain B1, then we have what we already have in the area, doctor's offices.
Well, if you look at the map.
Okay. I'm looking.
There are two vacant lots that are in the B3 already. So, going to an LB2 is actually.
Okay. I guess I'm not seeing.
Anything that's in that, like, orangey color.
Okay.
Those are all B3s. So.
Right. Going, that's.
Facing Cody and then going up and going off on, I guess that's up towards Airport. It's hard for me.
All right. Going up to the CVS, all that's B3. And there's nothing there yet now. So, our point is, you've got all this space that's.
I think you raise a good point, but.
And then the pond separates us. You know, it's like that big pond of Providence separates us, and they've got all this land. Why can't they use that first?
Let me just, I just pulled it up on the records. That's a different owner as well. So, the land you're speaking of is owned by Providence Park.
Right.
Maybe this applicant was not able to acquire that property. This is a property that he submitted based on, maybe it was available, maybe he was able to reach terms, or maybe this is where his prospective tenant wants to locate. So, we can't really force somebody to go pursue other property that may not be available.
Well, wait. We know somebody's gonna buy that property now?
They're gonna, sell, develop, buy. I mean, they have an application here proposing an LB2 use that has a conceptual site plan that's not required to be developed as per this because it's not a PUD application. But what I'm saying is, that's a different seller, a different property owner is a property owner that owns north of the lake is somebody different. So, we can't, we can't force an applicant to go pursue other property if this is the one they're trying to develop.
Okay. What we understood was that that whole people, the new subdivision that's coming in behind us was all one piece of property, including up to Summerby Road and Cody Road. And then Mr. Graham wants to sell. That's the person we're told wants to sell that piece. So, I'm not clear on what you're saying. Are you talking about there's another person involved?
No. I think.
Okay. Good.
The applicant, which was who you're talking about, and you just spoke.
Right.
He might want to forward again, originally applied for the B3, which was in keeping with everything that is along Cody today.
Correct.
But the staff, now that it's looking at getting the development around it, that is residential, more in keeping to your development.
Okay.
Which is residential, and the residential units will back up to you, is to make this into an LB2. Now, that doesn't preclude in the future that it could be a B1 use if that pops up because it would be allowed by right. But the highest it could go is the LB2, which when you read the classifications of that designation, it's more in keeping with what residents would want to be close to. And when you, it's, like I said, they came forward wanting the B3, and legitimately, they could have gotten that because it's really a budding a lot of B3. And so, it's already quite heavily there. And Providence does control it, so you want to think that maybe it would only be office building in the future as they developed in the past except for sort of things that front the major streets. What you're saying, and I think there's, there's an understanding that as those homes get developed around it, it's going to probably put more pressure to do something that would be more in keeping. But this gives the option open that it could go as far as the LB2, which is next up from the B1, which is more of the office designation.
Okay.
It doesn't take out, it takes out the pawn shops. I guess we could have the list maybe of.
I think LB2, just, and it may be general, but it basically allows all the B1 rights and a restaurant option without a drive-through, I believe, and staff.
I think the drive-throughs.
And some retail.
Or not, which that should be looked at later. That's another story. Do we have?
We have the chart of permitted uses, but it has all the uses and then the zoning districts. We do not have a list I can hand you that has just LB2 in it.
Okay. So, what we're saying, he wants now to.
Well, that's correct. He had come in making an application for the B3, which is.
What will you get?
Very indicative of the area.
Right.
But the staff, in looking at it and now seeing the new development that will come around this, which is the residential homes.
Okay.
They have recommended the highest use being a B2, LB2, excuse me. Limited business two.
Okay. So, when I wrote these up, and some of these were B2, they won't suffice then? Like, the liquor store would not come under LB2 then?
That is correct.
Okay. And the pool halls wouldn't be?
Open pool halls in LB2. It's unfortunate we don't have the, you could look it over while you were here.
Adult.
I felt the applicant is familiar.
Okay. Adult entertainment, all those would not.
It was to limit the intensity of the B2, which is not always user-friendly for residential.
Okay. All right. So, I guess all I can say is that you see what we're saying. And, you know, and we want, we want that to stay pretty out there. I mean, his subdivision seems very nice. We would like to go, you know, ride bikes back there, walk. If you, if we move there and we have grandchildren, you want, you don't want to go buy a liquor store, you know, with your child. It won't, okay, that wouldn't be in the LB2.
And how much acreage is this site?
Yeah. How, how big is it?
1.85 acres.
1.5 acres. Not huge.
1.5 acres?
1.8.
1.85. 1.85, almost two acres, yeah.
A little shy of two.
Ms. Fair, I think too, by just knowing the fact that the applicant is developing both pieces, it is interest to make sure that whatever goes on this lot complements his larger development, so.
But I keep, I keep understanding, Annie, he's gonna sell that. Am I wrong?
It's gonna be a development that he's gonna be overseeing, sure.
Oh. We just kind of thought he wouldn't. Once he sold it, whatever goes in, that was our fear, then he has no control.
You can, you can check with the applicant and get more information, but that's, that's our understanding.
That's your understanding, that he would? Okay. All right. So, I guess that's it. So, you'll consider what I'm saying too? And then take that when you make your decisions? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else here to speak against the application? All right. Moving on to number eight. Ms. Latham is recused on number eight. Is the number 162, number eight, 162 and 186 East Drive, that is at Spring Hill Subdivision. Is the applicant here?
Brett Orell with Poly Surveying. This property here, the applicant approached me. He has met with the city council member, Ms. Rich, along with the neighbors, and has presented this plan. It's a 24-lot residential subdivision off of East Drive with one access point. We have presented a rezoning application for R2 that was based on a pre-development meeting that he had with staff. That was their recommendation. We presented 45-foot lots. I think they're average about 110-plus feet deep. We've, as part of that PUD, we've presented a larger footprint in the hopes of getting a reduction setback because of the smaller lots. I think we've asked for 20-foot front, five sides, and five in the rear unless an easement is present, and that's been noted by staff in the report. Center Drive backs up to this property is currently undeveloped, also very steep in nature. We're okay with that being denied as far as access. This, again, it's his plan to be a residential development. I know the neighbors, there are some neighbors here, we'll listen to some of their questions and try to respond to those, but if the planning commission, if you had to review the staff report, have any questions now, we'll gladly answer those. But we are in agreement with all of staff's recommendations.
What access did y'all ask for on Center Drive? Did you?
We didn't ask for any, any access. Denial of access to Center. There's, there's a note placed on the subdivision plat that lots 10 through 15 were denied access, so we're not looking to annex any, any other road other than East Drive, which is just currently a public right-of-way. This subdivision also, to clarify, will be developed as a public road and turned over for, to the city maintenance.
How wide did you say? Because, did you say 50-foot lots? No.
45-foot lots. And that's consistent. If you, if you look at, you know, Sussex to the south is townhomes, I think eight units to the structure, and even further in Magnolia Place, I believe, much smaller lots, I believe, than then. So, it's very, it's very extent with the surrounding areas. You can see there's R3, the yellow, I'm assuming is R2. Is that correct? So, we are a budding R2. We're just, we're just continuing that R2 and not asking for any more intensity there.
Just so I know, could they have not, so just a PUD, could they have not kept the R1 and done the less than 700 square foot?
They exceeded the density requirements. They need the R2.
Density requirements, so not necessarily the lot size requirement, but the density.
Correct. Number of units per acre.
Gotcha.
I have a question because of the staff report.
No, no, I believe I'm where I need to be.
The staff report makes reference to changing the footprint based on easements and everything, and it's really hard for me to figure out exactly what you're talking about. But in meeting with the residents that had come to my office wanting to meet with the developer, and actually, I would be missing not bringing Perrin Woods to the table, and they got letters. And so, there was a meeting yesterday with one representative. We pulled that together, but what's represented are 1,800 to 2,300 square foot homes. Is that possible, when they moved them out of the, to get them out of the 10-foot easements that you're talking about and setbacks?
You can have a two-story home that could easily meet that.
Make this where it would.
Yes, ma'am. And just, it's on the screen behind you. You can see at the bottom, hold on. We need a pointer. Ah, there. See that five-foot minimum building setback line? That's what the MBSL stands for. But then you have the drainage easement. So, that is the comment that Mr. Orell was referring to for consistency sake. That setback line needs to move up to coincide with that drainage easement line. Big no structures should be located within that area.
And what about the ones that talked about the rear?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that?
That's the rear. The street is up front.
Yeah. That was just an oversight on my part. That could be, when this gets into a design phase, a 10-foot drainage easement is typical minimum for any type of construction. It may be when they get into a design, they may need 50 feet, and therefore, the setback would coincide with, 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 no permanent structures are allowed in an easement. So, it's an oversight, but we aren't agreeable to, to move that and understand what we need to do as part of the development as plans are developed with the site.
Chairman, I have some comments for the applicant. You know, we routinely see 10-foot easements that are, that are constructed and improvements are constructed in them. At some point in the future, it becomes next to impossible to get back in there and work in them, so your plat's gonna need to reflect that that is not a city-maintained easement, that that's a.
Just a notation.
A privately owned easement. And the other concern that I have, have is with, with the lot size and the amount of impervious area, you're gonna be required to review the drainage all the way down to the major outfall on similar developments, adjacent, you know, adjacent, on adjacent streets. We require the applicant to review the drainage all the way down to the outfall. It's just, make sure your, make sure your client is aware of that.
And, and you know, I'm not the engineer of record on this. They have worked with an engineer conceptually. I took that and actually produced a layout from that. So, they will have to meet those requirements based on your stature.
We just don't want that to be a surprise to them, where they think they're just gonna design their subdivision and tie it to the city system that's out there. We will require them to analyze the remainder of that system all the way to the outfall to make sure that it's not creating an upset, upset condition.
I believe they are, they are aware of that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have another question about that. Instead of a full cul-de-sac, which in this day and age, I would think quality development would have. age, I would think quality development would have not this hammerhead, because one, you wouldn't be going into the Sussex place, that, because you're completely separate. Now, there's vacant land to the other side of the views, maybe that's a reason to go in that direction, but the idea of getting a full cul-de-sac so that garbage trucks wouldn't have to pick up, and as a matter of fact, I don't think garbage trucks particularly like that.
I understand that, that concern. I will say this, if you haven't visited a newly-developed subdivision in the city of Mobile, the cul-de-sacs are enormous. You cannot, it hinders development. If you don't have a certain amount of land, 330-foot minimum of frontage, you can't make it work. You have a lot of irregular-shaped lots. This is something I actually presented to them, and no one is doing this yet, but I believe it is something that should be pursued. It gives you the best utilization of the property with, with more conformity in terms of development. You're, you can, you can see, you actually constru, it costs the developer much more money.
They don't garbage service, they want to do private garbage?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think garbage is, is the intent nor the concern.
Back up, the trucks.
I mean, they constantly, I mean, I was just in Savannah in the city, and it's, it's every morning at 3:30 in the morning, they're backing up everywhere. I, I don't see that, I mean, in the city, we got 50-foot streets, I mean, it's very common, someone picks up garbage. I think garbage, garbage is a minor concern here. The developer themselves is taking on...
They would do garbage service.
Understand that.
So they, they would not opt for service, is what you're saying? Because I don't, I mean, I, unless I'm incorrect, I guess we'll have to check with sanitation, but I don't think they want, want back up in those trucks when they get, they, they require that full cul-de-sacking.
Well, well, this, this meets fire code standards, so a fire truck can back up, they have to, that's what it's intended for. So this is actually exceeds fire truck standards, and that fires not here to, to back that up, but it does meet all of their condit, and it exceeds that. We've just presented this in a way that gives a more concise development to, to maximize footprint and make it more uniform in look and appeal. And I believe you're going to start to see more and more people to start to look at this option as the cul-de-sacs have grown so enormous. I mean, you're talking 100, you're 100-plus foot of pavement. If you lay your eyes on Magnolia Village out at, near the golf course, you would be shocked to see how large these things are.
Yeah, the goal is not more cul-de-sacs, I agree with that completely. I mean, I would rather see it in a more grid pattern coming through to Center, but obviously that's a poorly developed street at the moment, but that's the only thing I could see. Forcing a cul-de-sac in this would, would not be the solution, I don't, I don't think.
The C-made, and developer have to be responsible for Center that this backs up to, I mean, not backs up to, but I've got a seat on it, on the map, but it's called the landings. Do we have that in there yet? They have to do the entire street with curb, gutter, and sidewalk, because the people on West Drive did not want it coming out on West, because they're already congested, and that's a really bad traffic pattern. So that's what the C required. So why couldn't that go out and, and make that stub to meet what that other gentleman has to do for the landings, which is student housing, and, you know?
Are we talking about this application now, or somebody else?
No, this, for this one, and, and to...
Is, is the landings north of this? Is the landings, because that...
Right, exactly, it's just right up in there.
No, no, that, that doesn't join this property.
It doesn't adjoin it, but they have to do all of Center Drive, it will be improved to be standard.
Can I ask a question about this piece? I'm just curious, so lots nine and 10, you probably did provide for a stub out there, because you've got property instead of a right-of...
I have real property between so that no future use could continue to either the property to the north nor the south.
But is that something you want, or is that something the city wanted?
That's something I, I chose to put on there to, to not illustrate any future stub outs. So that's real property between both the public, which will be deemed the public right-of-way, and adjacent properties. Therefore, no stub out would remain. The only access point would be to East Drive permanently. Would this go forward, be approved, submitted, recorded, from here?
I was just, like when Taylor was saying, more of a grid pattern or more connectivity, is that just something we didn't, was there not...
Yeah, I would rather see that.
...thought about or not really, about requiring the connectivity to the north? Was that just not important? I know the applicant didn't want it, but did the city not have any thoughts on that?
The commission, at, at this point, if the connectivity, if you look to the south, you...
Not to the south, but just to the north?
Right. The commission could require that. The commission can also require, if, if desired, a cul-de-sac.
I don't want a big old round circle. I was just asking. And your goal was to show the real property as to not scare people that it was going to be developed even denser onto a future property to the north? Is that what I'm understanding?
Well, well, yes, I mean, they, this is their project. They didn't necessarily want to share their work and what they plan to build with, you know, having, they don't own, they don't own the property to the north, so, you know, you build it, you construct it, you're doing well. It's, it's not hard for, you might have be cash poor, and someone come in and now is building a road, stubbing into yours and, and using the same model, so I think they want to have...
Yeah, but at that point, it's a city road, no?
Yes.
I mean, it's not y'all's road anymore, the city's maintaining that road.
Yes, understand, I understand that, but at, at this point, I mean, you know, you're opening up other things, not just residential. You know, we've got R3, we've got other, other opportunities there. I ju, I just felt like it was appropriate, they wanted to have their own development, so whether that's a cul-de-sac or a T-intersection, they both meet fire code, they both do not allow additional access to adjacent properties, therefore I thought it was appropriate to present it in a way in which there were no other future stub outs, any, any, specifically when there's an undeveloped right-of-way directly behind the property, that in 20 years, the city may deem necessary to construct. I, I don't know.
In, in the hypothetical scenario here, if the property to the north tried to be developed in, in a similar configuration, if the developer still owned lots nine and 10, they could come back to this planning commission and...
Sure.
Have that, have that consideration to make that a, make that a loop. I think that's probably what everybody was looking at, that if that other property to the north was being, being developed and you had a loop, you had a little bit better circulation there, but...
Well, yeah, I mean, it could be pulled, it'd be pulled back more, I mean, you know, it was, I just put a, a 5-foot fur in there. Honestly, when, when the design takes place, that will control more or less what, what they'll, they'll need to put in at that point.
Does the commission have any other questions? Is there anyone else here to speak for the application? Is there anyone here to speak against the application? Let me take, we can have four speakers. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Lee, I reside at 300 Brent Mill Court. I'm here representing the Ridgefield subdivision. Here not to speak in total opposition to the proposed development, I was to address several items of concern and seek some clarification. My first question for the commission is regarding the documents submitted by the developer. I'm not sure if they made it to y'all, but this is what was made available to the residents that met with him, and it's renderings of the proposed development, and we're kind of curious if these documents are being submitted as part of, part of the PUD, and if they're not, we'd like to know what assurance that we have that the plans and the drawings in this, of the finished product are going to end up looking like what they passed out to us and told us that they were going to be. As I said, I attended a meeting with the developer, was present, it was a good meeting, there was a lot of discussion. The main concern by everyone, all the residents in the surrounding area, was the access to East Drive. We requested that he just flipped the whole proposal over. As you can see from the submitted plans, the developer is proposing to have parking for over 96 vehicles. That's the 24 homes, he's proposing two-car garages with two parked, two cars parked in front of that. So this makes an additional 96 vehicles that are going to be traveling East Drive in both directions. When one travels south on East Drive, your only option to get to Airport Boulevard is to cut through Ridgefield. As this commission is well aware, from numerous residents that have addressed this body regarding the cut-through traffic on East Drive and in Ridgefield, to get to South Alabama is primarily where most of it is coming from, and this is creating huge safety concerns for us. We understand traffic studies, we know what the numbers say, but it doesn't represent the seating vehicles, and it doesn't represent the traffic concerns. And of course, the factor that we all know is coming, and that we're acutely aware of, is the campus stadium is only going to add to this problem. The logical answer is to have the ingress and the egress limited to Center Drive. I would like to thank right now the commission for realizing in the past the problems that this has created. When the 110 project, the large apartment project just to the east of us came up, they were denied access to East Drive. They were granted an emergency access only. And to our west, you heard all the, all the concerns regarding the traffic and the associated problems from the project on, on the landing. The gentleman was correct, right now, they call, call Center Drive a minor undeveloped street, but this gentleman, we understand, with the landing project, is soon to start the development, and the upper portion of Center Drive will be developed, so all they're going to need to do is tie into this. The condition that you applied for the landing can be the same condition that you could apply to the Villas of Spring Hill. As we know, the city of Mobile has no plans to pay to improve Center Drive, and this would be definitely what we would call a all-in-win situation. The local area residents are going to win, because we're going to, going to be in control of the traffic. The city's going to win, they're going to end up getting it, a, a street developed, and then all the citizens that would have to pay for it are going to end up owning, because it's going to end up being a paved street in Mobile, and one unpaved street will be removed from the list that we have. There's been a concern by the developer about no traffic light at Center Drive. It's an open intersection. If you go Center Drive, 202 Old Road, take a right-hand turn, you go down one block to a traffic-controlled intersection. Has a dedicated left-hand lane where any of the residents, any of the guests could turn into South Alabama. If you were to go west on O'Sheil Road to go visit some of the businesses, one block further to the west where you enter in down there by the Yankee Baseball Stadium is another traffic-controlled intersection. A lot of us that travel out that direction and go O'Sheil Road know that you just simply wait for that traffic light, then you get in the break in the traffic, and then you make your left-hand turn. I guess what I'm saying is we don't see or share the concerns he has about Center Drive not having any type of traffic control device. So in closing, I'm just going to request that if the motion to approve is made, that it would include following amendments. Number one, that the plans presented to the neighbors would be a condition of the PUD, and number two, that the ingress and egress to the subdivision would be limited to Center Drive with no access to East Drive. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Would you like to speak? Did you want to come and speak to, yes ma'am? Please come to the podium.
Hello, everybody, my name's Paul McLean, and I live at 149 East Drive. I've been in there 35 years, I'm a homeowner, and I'm real concerned about these, whatever they are, apartments, townhomes, it's rental property. And we have three apartment buildings on that street, we have two places of worship, we have a school, we have the Mitchell Center, and Ridgefield, by the way, wants to close off one of our exits. I'm an elderly woman, if I fall over with a heart attack, I want somebody to be able to get to me. And we're piling more, and I think y'all have lost your minds, myself. How much more can this one little street stand? They built those three-story apartments right behind Wyndham there, that's where all my neighbors, my good friends live, elderly people. They're having whoopee parties out in the parking lot, throwing their trash in their, in my neighbors' backyards. I can't get to my backyard, because I live on the corner lot, I live on East and Wyndham. And I don't, I don't see how this, this little street can handle any more people, any, any more ethic. I just, just, it's ludicrous. And this is my home, I have lived here for 35 years, and I'm trying to protect it. My property value probably has very much decreased because of that three-story monstrosity that backs up to Wyndham Court. My sister lives in Houston, she came, came to me, and we walked down the street, down Wyndham Court, and I said, "Look at that." She said, "Oh, my goodness, Paul." In other words, your, your neighborhood, the looks of it is ruined, you know? And I didn't know anything about this three-story apartment building, to even go vote or, or express my opinion about it, but jacking some more in there, like that man said, 90-something cars, it's crazy. That's all I got to say, and I am totally opposed to this, very much so.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else here to speak against the application?
Hi, I'm, I'm Mary Devero, and I live at 6004 Sussex. I've lived there for over 30 years, and have had the chance to come to the zoning commission before, and y'all have done a really nice service for us. I have a couple of concerns. One is the drainage, I know that's a 10-foot drain, but that, that part of East Drive does incline quite a bit, and I think we learned when the apartments came in, it was a different development, about all the problems Wyndham had, which is basically right across from this proposed development. So I'm very concerned about flooding, erosion, especially if the whole lot is cleared. I'm also concerned about what kind of separation will be from the back of Sussex to the south of this. The hammerhead looks nice, but I'm really concerned that it's only about a 10-to-15-foot separation, which would not be that hard to traverse, and we do get a lot of traffic coming in for the university, we accept that, and we do want development in keeping with our neighborhood, but some of these safety concerns for the, going forward for the future I think need to be addressed. And I think Mr. Lee points out a very good point about having the egress rest in our street if possible, just to cut, cut down a, to minimize some of that cut-through nature. Basically, our concern is to preserve the neighborhood, some green space, not to have something right up with just a chain link fence, you know, and a drain right there. And that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
We can have one more speaker in opposition to the application?
Good afternoon, I'm Scott Jones at 5958 Shenandoah Road North, at the corner East Road in, in Shenandoah. Honestly, we don't, I don't think we have enough information to make a determinate, positive or negative at this point. I haven't heard exactly what these are going to be. I, I think there are definite concerns that have been addressed here today for all the right reasons. I like the idea about the Center Drive access only. I will tell you that I've got four kids and three grandkids, and 7 o'clock in the morning, 8 o'clock in the morning, 3:30 in the afternoon, 5:00 PM, I can't even get out of my garage. Can't back out of my driveway. And God forbid, I attached the boat to my truck because of the traffic. 98 more cars, and there's four other single-family lots for sale, or are going to be for sale, with acreage. What does that equate to? 98 plus 98 plus 98, unless they turn it into an apartment, and then you've got 298. So where are we going? What are we doing? One thing that hasn't been addressed, I've lived in the subdivision for a little over a year now, moved from downtown Mobile because of crime. Why did I move from my house? Because I live next to a Section 8 apartment. 5 o'clock in the morning, I had a guy in my house, who's now sitting in jail because I had to go out and take care of it. We've had one break-in in Shenandoah since I've lived there. They came from the apartments on East Road. So if we're going to go to more condominium, meaning more apartments, this is an issue. It's, it's safety of my kids, my grandkids, and everybody in here. It's being able to get to work, being able to back out of my driveway safe. I mean, I've got a 16-year-old daughter, almost had a wreck yesterday, I watched, because somebody speeding around didn't stop at the stop sign, doing about 30 miles an hour, and almost hit my daughter. And I guarantee you, not in the neighborhood that I live in. And I guarantee you, not in the neighborhood that I live in. I bought that house that I live in because it was in a residential area. Yes, it was off Airport Boulevard. I asked the question, is this a residence or is this within a city-type environment that's a throughway? I was guaranteed, this is not a throughway. This is a nice residential area, which if you drive through there, it has every appearance of that, and the home values portray that. It's my biggest sentiment that I have, bar none. And thank everybody in here as well. If you look at the houses in Midtown, you've got $100,000 houses, and then the planning commission allowed these apartments to be built right next to them. Now, there are houses that will not sell because they're Section 8 apartments. Was that the foresight of the planning commission 20 or 30 years ago? No. But look where we are today. And we've got problems with the way the city's laid out today because of decisions that were made 30 years ago. Gorgeous landscape there right now. I understand that we want to develop, I'm pro-development in a smart and comprehensive way, and we take it from a holistic approach to maintain what we have in that area. And like the lady said, East Road cannot handle more traffic. We're already saturated, more so than we should be. And I would say we either mandate that Center Road be the only access for any development in the future on East Road, or, and you're not going to want to hear this, or we shut off East Road from that subdivision. One of the two. We cannot take more traffic on that road for the sake of my grandkids, for the sake of my kids, for the sake of me being able to get to work on time. We cannot accept more traffic on East Road. And God forbid they build the stadium, okay? Which I'm 100% for. I graduated from South Alabama, and I got my commission from South Alabama. I'm glad it's going there. What I'm not glad about is we're going to have, who knows what the traffic flow is going to be at that point? So I'm begging you, take this into account, please, for the sake of the families that live in that neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Would the applicant like to respond to the comments?
First off, yes, the owners or the applicant did present what they plan to construct here. 1800 to 2200 square-foot homes, two-car garages. One thing that was just thrown out, which is, I think, misconstrued, in that meeting they presented that they're presenting two-car garages, two cars, 24 lots, 48 cars. They stated in that meeting that in front of the garage, you could potentially park two additional cars. We're not saying there's going to be 96 cars there, okay? Let's clear that up. So that keeps getting thrown out, not the N10. That's a little overexaggeration. I would like to address Mr. Atchison's question about the stubout. The reason I didn't show that is this is currently, I can't predict the future, it's currently R1 property to the north. There's a residence right there. I didn't think it was appropriate to stubout directly to a residence. You know, what is that going to look to them? I don't know if they're here, but that was why we put that buffer. Should you choose to do something different as a commission, that's your decision, but that was the intent. At this point, it's my understanding that Center Drive is completely undeveloped and is dirt. Is that correct? Is traffic? Speak on that. Is that correct? Okay.
Well, Mr. Orell, I will point out that the proposed subdivision, the landing, which is going to be located on this property, their only point of access will be to Center Drive, and as part of their approval, they are required to improve it to city standard all the way down to their entrance.
And that is currently under construction?
It's not under construction yet, but I think they have submitted drawings for that.
Should it not go forward if you put this condition on this developer? You're going to have him build a 1,000-foot or more public road for a residential development that has public access currently? I think that would be ridiculous to ask someone to do. So I wish you would consider this as part of your determination on this. You know, I believe the developer, I've worked with a lot of developers over the years, I believe these guys have been forthright in coming to the city council person, meeting with the neighbors. They had a meeting prior to me even submitting this application, along with opening up an opportunity to meet again yesterday prior to this meeting. Normally, the procedure here has been the developer throws it out here, gets all the comments, gets everybody on an uproar, and ultimately then tries to start, you know, doing things. So I believe they've done everything in their due diligence the best they can to present something to this commission and to you guys that is consistent with the area and the transition of this area. So we're asking that it be approved based on the staff recommendations, and I hope I've addressed any of your concerns, and I'll field any other questions.
I have a question because I kept the comment about the 96 or 98 cars, and I know they're exaggerating that, but is the concrete on the drive just in, I mean, in front of the house just lined up with the carport or is it entire front yard?
No, it would just be, you know, front entry garage, typical 20-foot wide.
So that's not a four-car parking apron out front?
No, not at all.
Okay.
How much parking would be required in an R2?
Well, these are going to be single-family homes, so they would not be required to meet multifamily parking requirements.
Even though it's in the R2?
That's correct. Because if that were the case, then every other single-family home, that if a new one gets built on Sussex or any of the other developments, then they would have to meet the multifamily parking requirement. But since...
And if it was above an R1?
Well, Sussex is zoned R2, as is Magnolia, and they are, in fact, single-family homes on R2 properties. So they would only have to meet the single-family home parking requirement. That would be the same for this development.
So like when you look at that Magnolia Place today, that came in as, you know, in the mall, and thank goodness there are no homes up against the ditch, although it's programmed, they couldn't put them in, and they didn't, I don't think they're going to be built. But those homes are now all, they're not on our option, and you look down Magnolia Place Drive, and the people are parking. They don't have enough parking on their lot. So it's what goes on with housing. We just know this. That's how it works. I understand that this is...
No one has presented this as being student housing, number one. I would like to interrupt there. No one part of this application, nor am I, but that's what you just stated, and that's what everyone else... I just want to be clear.
Talking about Magnolia Place, we started out...
I'm sorry. It was confusing the way it was presented.
And I know that the developers did sit and use that with residents, but the idea was that it's going to be single-family units in this development. In your PUD, do you speak to that, or do you have HOA?
The PUD is simply to reduce the setbacks. Am I wrong about that?
And there's some conditions on the side?
You have reduced setbacks. You have reduced site coverage.
Site coverage, right.
And then you have these detailed plans that show one dwelling on each lot. The R2, however, is required due to the density, the 24 homes on the acreage.
How many homes would go in as an R1 without reduce lots? What would that ever be on these four acres?
I can't do the math as far as designing out, you know, as far as taking out for the right-of-way.
Might be a difference between four lots, approximately 60-foot lots. Is that what you're asking?
Whatever would be the...
I mean...
It depends on the depth, and again, you know, taking out for the right-of-way.
Maybe four to six.
When you do the PUD, you get more flexibility, so to speak, by applying your PUD. And what is the uniqueness of your PUD? What's this unique and not have negative effect on surrounding areas? Is that something that a PUD can do carefully?
I mean, I don't really believe I have to answer that. I mean, the...
Does the outbacking...
I just, I don't think we have to present the uniqueness of a PUD.
When we worked with the landing, they backed up to Perrin Woods, and so there was a real interest in seeing how that would be developed. And there were conditions that they put on their land development as far as the screening, as far as fencing. They talked about they were going to be taller because they're a little bit tighter up, so they were going to put hama shutters, so that they didn't block into people's back yards. You don't have that. That's not an issue. I'm assuming, how tall would a part to be of feet? Is that, and is that what is across from Sussex, or they're sitting in 300 feet to set, with their height limitation?
Well, based on R2.
But are they built today to that?
I have no way of knowing.
They wouldn't want people... And the conditions of the PUD are supposed to be tied to the property itself, too. So if we zone, we run into conditions where a PUD was attached, and then the PUD never came together with the zoning. Some people believe it's that on a apartment complex that just came off a long, long time, this planning commission approved, it was also not, it doesn't have a property ownership on to be built, wasn't intended to be, but their PUD was attached to the zoning when it was patented, that it was conditioned to be the zoning. That was something that, because once something gets zoned, there's a lot of things that could happen on an R2. And I'm not saying that this is going to fall apart or collapse, but if the zoning is fixed, then there's, then what is the amount against the met?
Aren't we taking this all as one application, subdivision, PUD, and zoning?
It's a group application, but with an R2, you have to have an 8,000-square-foot property in order to have a duplex. So if they don't have 8,000 square lots, then they can only have a single-family house on each lot.
Or then they can come back.
Or they can come back, do a re-subdivision, or come back and do a PUD to change what their criteria are as well.
When you say come back, if this project doesn't get developed, it's coming back as R1 because it's a PUD. The R2 is going to go away once that...
No. If the city council approves R2, the property is zoned R2. So if this proposed development is not built, then you'll have two pieces of property that are owned R2. If they are existing lots right now, then you could build one duplex on each property. So you would have a total of duplexes.
So how do we tie the zoning to this PUD that's been submitted?
We advertise it as one thing.
Okay.
I mean, I worked with the council's attorney on that for the advertising, to make sure that it followed. And that's a good thing because people walk away from the... Are there any conditions that the applicant would like to put in their PUD as far as type screening, fencing, material?
That has not been discussed. I don't believe they're at that point. They're in the deciding on even plan design, on prints. We presented the largest footprint here is what we did. You know, everything else was much smaller. I believe in the handout that was provided, it showed some conceptual, you know, look and appeal for the entrance and things like that, but we're still in the preliminary stages of this development.
So there's no guarantee that what the residents talk away with, that that's what the PUD would contain? Correct?
I can't speak to that.
Because I didn't get that sense from the applicant, from the developers.
I mean, if you want to ask the applicant specifically, you're welcome to, but I can only respond to what I can respond to.
I understand. That was what was represented at meetings.
Are there any more questions? Then we'll move on to number nine. Thank you.
Number nine, north and east sides of Summerby Drive, 365 feet east of Cody Road South. Applicant present?
Yes. Roughing Ground, 6576 Equator Boulevard. Can I address the question about the lot, commercial lot? I'm representing the owner on that piece. I'm acquiring the subdivision piece, the residential subdivision piece, and he asked me to go through the rezoning process now while it was too vacant and try to land. I don't, I can't speak for his intentions, but I do believe that it's just, he's looking for professional office space. I mean, I would, I can put conditions in my deal with him that he doesn't put a strip joint there. I mean, because what I'm trying to build, I don't want that, but we've not gone that far because I'm making the assumption that he's not, that's not his intent. But I can, I'll say give you insurance, I give you insurance that I'm not going to let him do that from my perspective on what I'm trying to do. So I think that's agreeing to do the LB2. We felt like we were, you know, we're asking to more compatible use for what I'm doing also. So if that gives you any comfort, but I think that's, we, you know, professional office is what I think was going to happen there. I own some property on Gray Lot that we've been trying to do professional office for a long time. It just hadn't happened yet, but we think that's what's what the use in the mid-street area of Code B. So I just can't imagine a high retail, tail traffic thing would ever even want to look at something like that. So if that helps, I'll, you know. On the residential project, this is a project we're trying to put together, all the arbors of, the arbors at Summerby Park. It's a 74 lot, for lack of a better term, garden home, patio home project that we're proposing to do in a three-phase plan, initially building about 21 to 25 lots initially. All the conditions and the terms that the staff had recommended, I'm in agreement with, with the exception, and I think we've talked about this today, and we can, it's a gated concept. I think we agreed that we understand that gating streets from a...
Public street.
Public street is prohibited, and we've kind of gone through a round of that, trying to figure that out, and we've come up with a solution. So what we proposed, and the staff has offered some language, I don't know if you presented this to them, but basically what our intent would be to build an entrance with gates that would be operative either by a motion device, either a street, you know, what you call the activation, street activation system, or...
Electric eye.
Electric eye, or whatever would make sense that would, a person, car would pull up to the gate, and the gate would open, and you'd come in. But it was more of a perceived idea of security in a gated concept without being, you know, push key or secure key fob, or what do you call that? So I think, and what I understand is that this is an acceptable alternative, which we recommended or we offered and will agree if that's acceptable.
Are you agreeable to this?
We agree. The only question is the queuing space, which is, I assume that's the stacking distance or how much you could...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Just making sure we do not have traffic backing up onto Summerby Drive waiting for the gate to open.
Yeah, and that's fine. It's just how do you, what are the criteria? Is it 40 feet?
We would work with traffic engineering. That'd be part of the approval process.
Okay. Well, we can... Well, we can, we can work through that. It's, I think that's okay. It's just, the only concern that we would have, obviously, the lot, the first two lots, we put the little cut-through, so those, say Lot 1, said I'm going to go make a U-turn to go out, that they would cut through the little, the little space in the middle. So it's just trying to figure out how to put a gate. And I was just thinking about this, sitting up there, how are we going to do it? We'll work through that, if that's acceptable.
He would want that lot to have, to have the controlled access, the benefit of the controlled access as well.
Correct.
Plus, we've recommended the denial of direct access to Summerbury, but city staff can work with you on making sure we get that correct.
We prefer not to do the, what do you call, perpendicular gate. We'd like to, I think it's more friendly, the swinging concept, sort of swing in on your ingress and swing out on your...
I understand what you, rather than a sliding one? Okay.
And I think that's just sort of a more residential feeling concept opposed to, but other than that, I think everything else is agreeable.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this? Yes, ma'am.
Gale Fair, 6927 Providence Estates Drive, South Mobile 36695. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for that, the wisdom not to put B3 in there. Thank you very much. Okay. The only question we have is, when our board went there, we were told that they were going to clear, clear-cut all of that land. If you look at number 11, it says, "Compliance with urban forestry comments. Property be developed in compliance with state, local laws that pertain to tree preservation and protection of both city and property rights. Private removal of trees in right-of-way will require approval of the Mobiliar Tree Commission." So naturally, we're backing up to it, and there are a lot of beautiful oaks. We understand the oaks are what's in this thing, so we just want to know how that would be addressed. Because we were told it would be clear-cut, so that's in conflict of what we were told, so...
The process for obtaining permit to remove trees in association with the development would be, the applicant would identify the 24-inch and larger live oak trees that are on the property on a site plan similar to what you see in front of you, indicating where the lots would be and the approximally footprints. And if it appears that the proposed building footprints coincide with the location of the tree, the tree typically is allowed to be removed.
It's still allowed to be? It's still allowed to be? So when he said that he's going to come in and clear-cut all of that property, then will the forestry even come out there and look, or?
Well, the arbors will look at the property as part of the permitting process, but it'll be ultimately up to the arbors and the individual tree health and the proposed development to determine whether these might be asked to remain.
Okay, good. So someone will come out. The idea of that it's just going to all be clear-cut is not true. Someone will likely come out, and there could be some trees kept in?
That I can't answer. They will be looked at, and ultimately, it'll be up to the arbors to determine which trees remain.
Oh, good. Okay, so they're coming out, so that's great. Okay. Thank you all very much.
And the decision would actually come from the tree commission?
No. The tree commission only has jurisdiction on trees in the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way, okay.
So the trees on private property are solely under the purview of the arbors.
Okay.
And it's only live oaks.
So, so what we're saying is, even though the forestry could say, well, we'll keep, this tree could stay, or whatever, the people developing it still could say no?
They could roll out plans that show that they need to cut down, you know, to do their development. So there's kind of like a give and take.
So, so when he told us he's just going to clear-cut all of that land, then basically he doesn't really need the forestry in there at all then, correct?
For 24-inch and larger live oaks, those are the only trees on private property that are protected.
24-inch around.
Diameter at breast height, so you're roughly four feet off the ground, 24 inches in diameter.
In diameter, okay. And four feet off the ground.
That was circumference diameters through and through.
Yeah, diameter is through, radius is half the tree, and diameter is all the way across the tree. Okay. All right. All right, then. So we can expect them to go out there and look, and look at all the trees? They will look for them. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Graham?
Yeah, clear-cut's a bad word, even probably going to feel that way. This site is, has some topography, and what our intent is to just take all the big trees down, because we're going to be moving and leveling the site, so it's going to, it's going to look pretty rough initially, but the oak trees, most of the oak trees, I understand, are on the, down that common area to the west. And we're going to, we're going to try to, we're going to try to leave all that, the big trees alone if we can. We're going to have, we have some detention, detention structure down there, but we're going to try to create a common area, park-like area down there, and leave those big trees in place. Yeah. See, we're going to, our plan is to put a walking trail around that area. It may be a, it may be a, conceivably, we could do a retention pond where we retain water and make a little water feature, or it would be a dry detention that would just hold water and release it on the release rate. But our intent is to leave those trees there, the big oak trees there. There are not a lot of live oaks into the property, but most of it's just big pines that we'll have taken down. Anything that's not in the way of the cut and fill, we'll leave in place. But usually on small lots, you don't have a lot, there's really no trees left once you, either we take them down as a developer, or the builder takes them down as they build the houses. So it's kind of a, and most people don't want big pine trees next to the house, so that's kind of the plan.
So there will be a retention pond there, that's correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, the area is a retention pond, so your water will be taken here.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
These are to be owner-occupied, to your knowledge?
Chairman, if I may provide comment. I would just caution the applicant, if you go forward and you're doing your due diligence, as you know, many of the subdivisions up and down along Cody, the land is, has a lot of springs in it, so obviously, I would assume probably at the end, there's, you're going to want the roads accepted by the city. So just make sure that their civil engineer and their respective geotechnical engineer does their appropriate due diligence on that groundwater condition, because that's, a lot of those neighborhoods, as you drive up and down there and in them, you'll see the water literally bleeding out of the slopes. And when they, when they've done those big cut and fill sections to try to make the developments developable, I mean, it creates a situation that just has to be dealt with by the, by the civil, just designing the water.
Yeah. One of the first things I do before I look at a project is I pull the old soil maps, and we go, and this is all good soil, that's the type soil. We don't, we don't see any groundwater springs on it, so there's no wetlands on the site at all, so knock on wood, we're going to avoid it. But yes, when we find those, we'll deal with those.
When you start doing those big cuts and fills out there, the other neighborhoods that are on the other side of Millcat Creek and then farther down, they all, they all have them. So just be aware of that and look, look carefully, because when it, when it comes to the city accepting of the subdivision, you know, we just want to make sure that's a smooth process, that the, that the system can handle that groundwater, not just, a lot of times, we worry about the water coming down on top of us, but in areas like this, it's the water coming up from the ground, and we just need to make sure we design for that accordingly.
We've obviously not done some soil borings yet, but, but we, we're hoping that we're not going to be dealing with that, but we will deal with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Are you making any comments in favor? Or responding or in opposition?
Opposition, well, not in top, clarification. I live in the, my name is Bill Bilgus. I live in the neighborhood. We're not opposed to this development, but we do have some concerns about how it will go in. And Mr. Hamburgers stole most of my thunder. As Mobiliens, we know that when it rains, we get a lot of water. And this area has a lot of, a lot of hills, a lot of contours, and we're constantly battling water. My house back, will back up to this development, much where that, where it says drive, in Providence Estates Drive, that's my house. We're constantly battling water, and we are concerned, because of the nature of the hills in our neighborhood, once this area is clear-cut and the dirt moved from the south side of the property to level out all these contours, and you start changing this topography, we are going to have a lot of water issues, because we already have them now. So we want to make sure that does get addressed. And I also wanted to see, these are, this neighborhood as proposed, seems to be a nice high-end development, and I would think some type of vegetative buffer between this neighborhood and Providence Drive, and the Providence neighborhood probably would be a good fit, too, to help us keep, you know, both, the values of both projects, you know, up. So I would like you all to consider some type of that vegetative buffer. I noticed from the comments I've read and hear, we're now looking at minimizing the setback space between the two developments. I would like to see that at a standard 10 feet, instead of being reduced back down. And there are, you know, and I know we don't really have control over this, but there are a lot of nice trees that don't meet the 24-inch standard that are already right between the two neighborhoods. You know, if those could be kept as part of some type of vegetative buffer, I think that would just increase the value of both, both neighborhoods and both developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Any questions from the commissioner? Mr. Graham?
On the, on the north side of the property, the cut and fill plan is probably going to require some retaining walls and what I call slope ditches, concrete ditches, that are, to pick up water coming from Providence Estates. And, and the concern that I have from trying to leave a buffer is that now I can't do that. So, you know, we're going to require fencing along the side of the lots. I don't know how to, you know, obviously, perfect world, we could leave trees and buffer, but the unfortunate thing is downhill from Providence Estates, so we're having to deal with water that's not picked up in Providence Estates. And to do that, we build slope ditch, you know, concrete ditches and/or retaining walls where we take it down. So my intention, I mean, I've been doing this a long time, my intention is not to cause, believe me, cause no problems to Providence Estates in terms of water. But I don't think I can do this if I've got to leave a landscape buffer, just it weren't because of what I'm going to have, the size lots we're talking about, the sizes we're talking about. We're trying to attract a market that doesn't want a yard anymore, wants a nice little courtyard in the backyard, and to try to create some security, some privacy. And the way we can do this is with, with, reducing the size of these lots, building fences, requiring fences along the back, and dealing with the stormwater that's, that's coming from, coming from the north. Like I said, I don't know how to deal with this right now, because we don't have, our engineering design won't really happen until we do our cutting, a clear-cutting, it's a bad word, taking all the trees down, and then coming back in and doing our design based on the conditions.
The other thing is, is this doesn't require a rezoning, you're still keeping it in R1?
Right.
So there are, there wouldn't be a requirement of any spacing between R1 to R1, correct? Other than if you say like the privacy matters?
You know, we're going to be in the $350,000 to $450,000 price range, so these are going to be really nice, nice homes.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is there anyone else here to speak on number nine? Since not, we will move into the deliberation phase. Ms. Denson has had to leave. Mr. Hamburgers, when we get to number eight, would you, oh, Mr. Hamburgers, excuse me, when we get to number eight, will you take over for me since I'm recused? Thank you very much. Number one, 5325, 5330 Schellinger Road South.
Move approval subject to staff recommendations.
Second. All over?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number two, 6105 Airport Boulevard.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Having been properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number three, 1451 and 1459 Government Street and 1458 Church Street.
I have a quick question on this. We're requiring a 20, 20-foot setback at every street frontage on this, is that correct?
That's correct. The historic district overlay does not apply in commercial districts in LB2. Well, it could be reduced here, I'm sorry.
Isn't, isn't there a frontage on Church Street as well?
Church. That could comply with the historic district overlay. It would, you're correct, take into account the setback of the adjoining structures. So we could modify that along Church Street.
Would staff be okay with removing it from Starling Street as well?
The Garden Center, there's not...
Well, this site came before the Board of Zoning Adjustment for variances, which included having things within the setback that would exceed the three-foot limit, and I believe that has already been approved. So adjusting the setback lines would not necessarily benefit this application, since they already have the Board of Adjustment approvals that they need to develop the site as proposed.
Also, excuse me, for the record, we do have an email. Nobody spoke in opposition to it, but we have an email from Brenda Bolton with a Leinkoff Historical District.
Correct. They came out in support of the variances for the Garden Center.
Took place of evidence rezones, so the neighborhood was very much behind this, and there was like four different, five different variances granted, and the neighbors were all... That's fine. But nobody was here, I just want to make sure we made note of this.
Taylor, go.
Yeah, I'll move to approve it as staff has recommended. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number four, 5773 Summit Street.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion can pass. Number five, 5188, 5228, Mobile South Street.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six, 5285, 5225, and 5245 Business Parkway.
Do we want to take these together or separately, the subdivision and the zoning?
I just would take them together.
Okay, okay. Move to approve the zoning and the subdivision based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Number seven, the northeast corner of Cody Road South and Summerbury Drive.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations. Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Just for clarification on this, we are approving the zoning to LB2, and we're also approving the subdivision.
Accept the subdivision. That motion passes. Number eight, Mr. Hamburgers?
We took the zoning in, so...
162...
Oh, I'm sorry. When you say subdivision, that's...
Number eight, 162 and 186 East Drive.
Is there a motion?
Actually, Nick, I've got a couple of questions, one of them that you could probably answer. We heard one of the opinions from a resident concerning drainage and erosion. Do you have any, any insight on that based on the facts as you see them?
I'm sorry, Matt, could you repeat that question?
Yeah, yeah, I got you. So, one of the residents, or one of the numbers, yeah, from Sussex, had questions about drainage, concerns about drainage. Is there any, anything in the information provided that would lead you to believe that there's going to be a drainage problem?
With regards to drainage, the site is going to drain to East Drive. So, the applicant's going to be required to, you know, design the site accordance with a connection there. And then what we've done on the other sites in that general area is required them, required the applicant and their engineer to analyze that drainage system, the existing city's drainage system, all the way down until it opens up into 12 Mile Creek. And if it turns out that improvements have to be made to the city's system, they're required to do that. Or they have to increase their retention size so that they're, that they're putting a smaller amount of water into that existing system.
Understood. And then, a couple of questions for traffic engineering, Mary Beth. The, looking at the number of, of houses or, you know, residences or whatever, is this going to be, I mean, as much as we can speculate about it, is this going to be a big issue adding that count of vehicles to East Drive?
With national standards, looking at single-family homes, the peak hour generation for 24 homes in the peak hour is about 50. It's about two cars an hour. So, I mean, if you think about that, that's pretty logical. But that's 50 cars over 60 minutes. And so, it could be all at one time or spread out. So, it's, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a very large impact. And that's, that's the reason why we did not require any kind of study. We usually look to at least, at least three, single-family homes to do any traffic study.
Okay. And the other thing is that there was a suggestion that the development, you know, mirrored so that it would, you know, pour out onto Center instead. Is that, what are your thoughts about that?
There, there were different circumstances surrounding the landing. That particular developer was looking at different property before he landed on the landing. He was very familiar with the access and the community concerned regarding West. And so, he came to the table with his proposal off of Center Drive. That was not anything necessarily dictated by the city. The roadway absolutely would have to be widened depending on the timeframe of the landings project, a couple of hundred feet to get down to this development. Eventually, we're just spreading out the problem to the different intersections. East Drive looks very attractive because it has a traffic signal.
Right.
But Center Drive does not, neither does West. The adjacent signals do provide some gaps for turning. But eventually, as traffic continues to just grow out there, which is, it's going to happen, it's, it's good that USA is growing. But the left turns at those unsignaled intersections are going to become more problematic. The median on Old Shell is not really wide enough for a car to store and make a two-stage left turn. So, safely they should be making one left turn from their stopped position to go westbound. So, from, from traffic engineering's perspective, access to the traffic signal is more desirable than access to an uncontrolled intersection.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, just to further elaborate on what Ms. Sullivan said, the landing consists of 56 dwellings with 210 bedrooms.
I'd like to make a further comment on traffic. This entire area, including Ridgefield, is designed in a way with single-use flow of traffic all dumping onto one connection to Old Shell Road. And it's my opinion that if we continue to develop with cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, all emptying to one road at one time, the, the traffic is not going to get any better. And it's not a density thing as much as the design, I don't beat good. This is just going to continue to get, to get worse as well in the Summerby thing with these cul-de-sac designs and dead-end streets.
I have a question. And I agree with you. I think the city needs to do a massive study on traffic management, especially when you have the rapid development at the University of South Alabama and those that are in the single-family classification. That people in Wyndham Place and in Sussex, they are city multi, some in R2 and some in R3, although they, you know, are owner occupied and not rental. The cul-de-sac, is there a way for this commission to want to see a cul-de-sac and not the hammerhead where if they are a public street and we expect the trash department to come and pick up the trash from these residents that are living there, they're one garbage, assigned their one garbage can like everyone else and then R1. And how does that, that we, I don't, we don't have anyone here from sanitation or from the rules of that, but I don't, I don't particularly think those trucks like to back up. I, I thought that was like prohibited of their behavior because they can cause harm. And if we have a cul-de-sac, then we're preventing that from ever being an accident waiting to happen. So, I don't know what it does to their development. I would have shown a picture of a possible cul-de-sac if that was the will of this commission. So, I'm thinking you might want to go into the cul-de-sac. It could be a modified one if you think they're too wide today. But as long as a good-sized garbage truck, safely go around and not have to back up after getting the garbage.
Mary Beth, I have another question to follow up on that. Presuming that this hammerhead, as it was called, meets the fire code, does the turning, the turnability of that, does that, is there a way to say whether that relates to a garbage truck? I mean, a garbage truck is not as long as most fire engines are.
The garbage trucks are really just two, maybe three axle vehicles. So, it's not much different than a delivery truck, a UPS truck, something of that nature. So, the fire trucks are more restrictive as far as the access that it requires.
Yeah. And I would just say from an administrative perspective, that our garbage truck drivers are actually very skilled drivers. And considering the, you know, I'm not going to say how they would pick up the garbage in this neighborhood, but typically what they would do is probably turn north onto the, and back up and pick the rest of it, and then turn right to go out. Or, you know, turn east or west to go out. So, I don't, I don't think that much of a problem. It's a, you know, there's, there's a pretty easy administrative fix. And once they get used to doing it, it's just, it's second nature.
I don't think, these are long radius turns coming into that hammerhead as well. They're not 90-degree angles. So, that makes it a little bit easier to manage.
Any further questions by Commissioners?
Actually, there was a representative shown about a two-story building. These could be three if it goes to the R2. Is that, do I understand that?
The height difference is, well, there is no height difference in R1 and R2. It's both 35 feet maximum height.
I just...
Further questions by Commissioners? Is there a motion?
How do you make that part of the PUD if it's not, if it's not in...
It's conceptual.
Yeah. I had people, if, if, if it's, okay, the first thing, the very first meeting, since it's been represented, that they met with the neighborhoods. And they did. I tried to get as many people who had contacted me to come. And they showed a development which is off of Gerbi and Lloyd's, I believe, or might be Gerbi, yeah, Gerbi and Lloyd's, called the Preserve. And I think that's what these pictures are. But that's an R1 and not an R2. I don't, I don't know. That might be. Is it R1 or R2? I don't think, I don't know. And so, people kind of went away pleased with what they were shown. But if there's nothing within the PUD that speaks to, that they're all brick, and that was something very well received. And in a PUD, you can limit your materials. Like I said, you could limit the placement of your windows, the placement of what materials is on the exterior. I mean, they showed interior pictures, but I know the city doesn't get into any of that. And that wouldn't be something we would oversee. But as far as the roofing and, you know, just materials. So, I don't, I feel like there's, I mean, it's going to come up to council and it's going to have a PUD attached, which this commission will affix at this time. And it will take an appeal to get the PUD to be in a position where people walked away from the table that that's indeed what will be constructed near their homes. So, at which point do we do that? It's...
Do what? I'm sorry.
Get those conditions placed on the PUD.
Those conditions being? Building materials?
Building materials, fencing, landscaping, things that are part of a PUD, common space, how they'll be maintained.
I don't, I don't know when's the best time, but it's not before you now. We've never...
We did it with the landing.
Did what?
The station not submit any building renderings with this application.
We, we have nothing, you know, whatever they show to the neighbors, we don't have before us. They haven't offered anything up. If you want to hold it over, so you've got to come back with specifics about...
I think that's fair.
What, I mean, just make a motion and let's...
I mean, we can make a motion. Or that's a requirement prior to, I mean, they know they've got to provide that prior to council? Or it needs to be?
I don't know. They know that they are going to be required to do that.
Those are types of, if materials, renderings and things of that nature are required, those are frequent, not frequently, those are usually attached to a PUD. They have been occasionally attached to rezonings, but not often. PUDs are the site plan-specific and can, can address some of those issues. However, those documents, while possibly presented at other meetings, were not presented as part of this application. So, it would be very difficult when construction time comes to have a clear sense of what the commission was requiring to be approved and what is not approved.
So, should we give two weeks for the applicant?
We, staff would recommend if the commission is going to hold over this application, it needs to be until the December 20th meeting because of the holidays next week and the next commission meeting following right after that.
Any further questions by Commissioners?
So, December 20th?
Do we have a motion?
I would do that we hold this up till December 20th to get the applicant the ample time to do, meet with staff to get the conditions of the PUD.
What type of, um, once there's a second, I would like some information, what we're going to need for them to...
Well, before we have a second, let's find out what conditions we want.
Well, I'm assuming it would be building materials, landscaping, things that are conditional into a PUD that that makes special.
Well, you need to look at the windows, that's the one, too.
Right. Well, on this one, it's not necessary. I just made that as an example, that we have that type of application that became part of the PUD because it was important to people that will see that change happen in, you know, to their, to their property. So, it would be materials, fencing, common areas and landscaping.
I'd also like to add that I'd like to look at Lot 10 and Lot 9, changing those handle areas to common area opposed to parts of those lots as well. At least an easy possibility of future connectivity. Ms. Rich, do you accept that amendment?
I'm not sure I'm following that last request.
Or the panhandle, making this right of way.
And losing lots?
No.
Oh.
And that would allow if parcel to the north was ever developed and Center Street was ever developed, it would be more connectivity and future access to Center Drive to release some of the traffic off east onto Center if it's, it's never developed.
Usually when we, in the past, and I don't, I can't find it in sub regs right, the second, but usually the curb cut to an adjoining property was when it was undeveloped. This is developed and it would be out, you know, Schillinger's Road, Cottage Hill Road areas where you had large tracts of land. And you knew there was going to be a subdivision next to it and we'd build, uh...
Well, if we privatize that land, I'm just saying, our problem is not the density, it's the design of everyone in this whole area of the world having to go to East Drive at 7:00 AM every morning, 6:00 PM every afternoon. I'm trying to carve in some option in the future of connectivity to where some people can go that way, some people can go this way.
It looks like somebody could do an assembly, more parcels up there to do something similar.
Yeah. I think the thoughts are if that property to the, to the north was developed, rather than having to re-subdivide Lots 9 and 10, the neighborhood would control a little common area piece which they could potentially sell to the adjoining developer. And it's a much cleaner, easier way to tie the two subdivisions together if a similar development was pursued north of this site. Yeah.
No, just an option. Just so it's not private.
Rather than those two lots, just having panhandles, just create a little common area that's the same to the right of way. And the neighborhood would own it as a common area parcel. They would control it. If they didn't want to connect...
Wouldn't have to.
Wouldn't have to, but they would have the option to. And it would be an easier, an easier interaction with the two.
Possibly that road eventually goes up and connects to Center and then we have two, you know, exits.
And for the, for the sake of my fellow Commissioners, Center Drive behind this property is exceptionally challenged in that the road is very recessed, down to the ground. The road falls off pretty dramatically. And so, a connection to Center Drive along the back of this particular parcel would, would be pretty difficult. I mean, it would encroach likely 100 feet, maybe if not even 200 feet into this development. So, it's really just about not possible to make a connection to Center Drive.
Go ahead.
So, we have a, we have a motion on the floor. And Ms. Rich, do you accept the amendment?
Oh, no, that's fine. I mean, I'm an engineer.
So, so I don't, I don't completely understand the scope of the motion. So, the motion is about building materials, holding over for building materials, landscaping, et cetera, information for the PUD and...
You're addressing landscaping, common area, and to request that they look at...
A common area.
The common area on 10, 9, and 10. And I guess that's it. Not south.
That's great.
I second Ms. Rich's motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Let, let's turn it back over to you.
Item number nine, north and east sides of Summerby Drive. It is a subdivision, a PUD.
I move to approve the PUD based on staff recommendations and findings of facts A, C, and E.
Now, will you...
Just to clarify, does that include the additional conditions provided?
And your, and staff's additional conditions for the access management, yes.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Subdivision. Move to approve the subdivision based on staff recommendations.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? That motion passes. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Do we have any further business, Ms. Papas? There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and safe holidays.